From six to seven, we were in executive session discussing a tenure recommendation and a special education issue. And now, we're going to reconvene to the open session. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We can have introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Meredith Moriarty.
Michael Cooper.
Jody Monroe.
Christine Beck.
Lynn Lenhart.
Holly Dellenbach.
Charmaine Widdesinger.
And Judy Kehoe.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the August ninth, two thousand seventeen meeting? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next order, business superintendent's report.
Thank you, Christine. A couple announcements. We did have our opening day yesterday. Thanks to all of you who were able to come. It was a great day. We had a barbecue and everyone was back, ready to go. Today, we had our freshman orientation. And tomorrow, the rest of the students will be joining us, so we're looking forward to that. I'd like to thank all the administrators who are here this evening and have to be ready tomorrow for all the kids to arrive, so thanks to them. Also, September eighteenth, from six-thirty to eight, we are hosting our first K-5 community fair. This is an effort by a subgroup of the coordinated health team to connect community organizations and provide opportunities for our elementary students to become engaged in activities. We currently have close to thirty groups who have contacted us and are going to be present, and our PTAs are providing refreshments that evening, so hopefully, we'll have a good turnout. I also sent out the memo asking for representatives for the district strategic planning committee, so I thought, maybe the board wants to discuss how you want to be involved in that process. If you want to have different people attend various meetings, if you want to have a couple reps on that, so if we could just discuss that, that would be helpful. And then Judy had one update she wanted to provide the board on tax payments.
Yes. At the August meeting, when we set the tax rates, I had indicated that even though September thirtieth fell on a Saturday, that that was going to be the last day to pay without penalty on your taxes. We had an inquiry and we did some additional checking into it, notwithstanding the fact that almost every other capital region district and perhaps beyond also had selected September thirtieth. We got clarification that per real property tax law, if the last day falls on a Saturday, Sunday, or a holiday, it goes to the next business day. So even though the post office is open and the banks are open, Monday, October second, will be the last day to pay your school taxes without penalty. We have arranged with the New York State Association of School Business officials, in fact, it just came out late this afternoon, they did a blast to all business officials in the state to make sure everybody was aware of that. There had been confusion because, shockingly, there were some conflicting sections within real property tax law. But anyway, that is resolved, and we will post that notice on our website as well for taxpayers to be aware. So, good news. We've also had two phone calls so far thanking us because they were so thrilled that the tax bills were, in fact, lower than last year's bills. We don't get those every day, so they really stood out.
So, at this time, the board wants to just decide how you want to proceed with the strategic planning committee.
How many, how many meetings do you anticipate?
I just pulled up. So there's, we have one community forum, Charmaine, that's scheduled for October eleventh. And then, there are, aside from that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven other meeting dates right now that are scheduled. And they go through May of next year, so I didn't plan any dates beyond the spring. I anticipate we'll have some, probably not over the summer, but definitely in the fall of the following year.
Do you perceive a benefit to have one or multiple people, or perhaps each member of the board take a meeting? I mean, is, I mean, how do you see this unfolding?
I'm not quite sure, because some of it will probably evolve as we have the initial committee meeting, which is scheduled for September twenty-eighth, and that's really to discuss the process for the community forum. And BOSI's communications is going to help with that process. I think a lot of the direction perhaps might come from the community forum and perhaps a survey to get other more information. So, I think it could work in multiple ways if you wanted to, because there are quite a few meetings, if you want to rotate it and have one or two members at each of those meetings and report back to the board. I do have scheduled on February seventh, as part of the State of Schools presentation, that I would provide an update to the entire board on the committee's progress to date and where are some areas that we're kind of moving. I think the board should be involved in the process, it's just a matter of how much people can commit to it.
Could I make a suggestion that after the September twenty-eighth meeting, that we have a discussion? Because I think you'll have a better sense of how the whole process is going to work, and then you'll have a better sense on whether you should have consistent board representation, or whether we should rotate after that meeting.
My question would be, what, maybe at that meeting, or you can decide, or sometime between now and the next meeting, what is the role of the board members on that committee? You know, should it be a consistent voice, or rotating, depending on what the expectation is? And the other thing is, it would be helpful to get more information about the community forum. Is that really just a kickoff? Is it going to be soliciting small group information? Because I know it's been helpful in the past, when we've had community forums on bonds or other big issues, that the entire board kind of showed up and just listened, we didn't participate, but we listened, so it'd be helpful to get more information about that.
In speaking with Jo Ellen, a little bit, I think the intent of the community forum is to do some small group feedback on perhaps questions that the committee initially developed, you know, in regards to the mission, the goals, areas that we want to look at further. So I do anticipate that forum will actually be somewhat similar to some of the forums we've had in the past, where we'll have several facilitators from BOSI's, and we'll have people, hopefully, there'll be a turnout, have people in smaller groups.
Is there, just to take a poll, is there anybody who is interested in going to all the meetings, if they know they are available?
I would be.
They're evening, evening, they're evening meetings, as I'm looking over your shoulder to see what time.
Six-thirty to eight-thirty.
Six-thirty to eight-thirties. So it's seven meetings over the next ten months.
Yeah, I would be.
I'd rather, I'd rather hear more, though, about what the, what the role of the board member is, to make, to make a suggestion.
Correct.
I might be interested in, but I don't necessarily see myself being in all of them, so I'd rather get more of a sense of what they're looking for.
No, but I just wanted to make sure we had participants who, if they wanted to go to all seven, we had that availability, or we were going to have to rotate no matter what, if there wasn't the interest there. And it looks like the interest is there for a few of you to attend all of the meetings, so if that's the direction. But we should have somebody designated to go to the first meeting, or at least a couple of people go to the first meeting.
The twenty-eighth.
On the twenty-eighth, to participate in the community forum, and if the three of you are, are interested in potentially attending them, or either individually or as a group, that might be the best.
Yeah, I'd be happy to go.
You said the twenty-eighth? Okay, I can go on the twenty-eighth. And the community forum, if it's like, the previous ones, I don't know if it would be overwhelming to have the entire board there or not.
Yeah, I don't think so.
It's always been helpful, I think, for the board to see the community gather together, if you can make it, and just to hear just the interaction. We don't participate, but just to hear.
Julie, that's Rosh Hashanah, twenty-eighth.
I thought I.
Twenty-first.
No, I'm like, I totally moved it to avoid it.
You're right, you're right, I'm sorry.
I only know because telling what's going on in college is on the twenty-first.
Yeah, no, it's, Yom Kippur's the next day, never mind.
Okay.
Sorry.
So Jonathan, Charmaine, and Holly, you'll plan to come to the twenty-eighth meeting? Okay.
And I think if anybody, and if anybody else could go, I mean, that's fine. I think it's just important that, you know, we don't have a single voice for the, for anybody to get the perception that, since we make the ultimate decision, that, that one person is speaking totally for both whole board.
Right.
And maybe being more in an observation role to, you know, just to get a sense of what the community is looking at, the community, the school community and whomever.
So September twenty-eighth and October eleventh.
Yep, October eleventh is the community forum, so.
The community one.
So I'll make sure, include the board in the entire agenda, but a plan that the three of you will at least be at the twenty-eighth.
Jody, that is the NISP conference.
The eleventh?
The eleventh, that's, I, because I.
Well, it opens up that evening.
Like, five of us might not be over there. Well, I guess let's just take it under consideration.
Are you, are you going the night, for the conference?
Yeah.
Okay. So you might miss one. So that helps, that's helpful, right?
Yep, thank you.
Does anybody now, for the, are you, are you sad to call the evening?
Yeah.
For the Board of Education report, Charmaine, do you have anything?
I got an impromptu tour of the stage that was built outside the middle school by Mr. Warford. I was at the farmer's market, and so I got an individualized tour on Saturday. I didn't even know it was there. It's a lovely space. He, maybe we'll say more about it. I know we all got invitation for this arupic cutting this Saturday, but it's a lovely place where there could be quite a number of things that could take place there. But that's it, I don't think I've got anything else.
I thought opening day went really well, and Jody did a fabulous job, and I loved a lot of the video clips they made. They made me chuckle. And today, I came into the building to drop off some stuff in the nurse's office, and it was really nice to see all the freshmen, all excited to, to be in the building, walking their schedules and doing the orientation, and I'm excited for the new school year. Anybody else?
I'm glad you mentioned that, Christine, because I went, and after the TED Talk that Jody showed, I went and picked up that book from the library alone together, and I started reading it last night, and it's, A, I was laughing quite a bit, but it's fascinating. And so, I would, if you haven't read it, and I've only started the first, really, chapter two, I would really recommend that you do. It's about why we, I know Ray's sitting right there, or standing right there, but what we expect of technology that we don't expect from our relationships. And it was ranks, having a teenager at home rang so true. And as I said, it was, I don't think it was meant to be funny, but I was laughing quite a bit, because how much I saw in there. The thing that I have, is I shared with Jody, that the author had an experience, she shared it with the head of Disney, who told her that when people go to the real animal park initially, they were disappointed that the animals didn't, weren't as real as the fake ones in the park. And so those were kind of the examples, and she used extensive interviewing on getting these kinds of examples, so it was a, it has started out as a fascinating.
Wow. At this time, we have Dave Hurst giving us an academic update.
So, thank you, and before I begin, I do want to recognize that we do have many members of our instructional leadership team here with us tonight to support the presentation, but more importantly, they were an integral, they played an integral role in actually helping put the presentation together. As you'll see, there's a lot of data that needed to be sifted through, analyzed, and we're just sort of beginning to unturn some of the stones, because State Ed was, you know, as timely as usual, and just gave us the three through eight data last week, with, you know, which works really well when curriculum writing happens over the summer, you can really start to implement some of the changes that that suggests when you get it a week before school starts. But nonetheless, we are pulling apart the data, we have seen some trends, and I'll speak to those things as we come across them within the update. But just to, again, highlight that we, with all of our presentations, we do point out which of the district goals that they apply to, and certainly, knowledge comes to mind when you're thinking about the academic update. But that's not to say that our academic programs don't also hit upon character and value, but tonight's presentation's going to focus on the knowledge part. So our overall results, so State Ed has given us our report card, if you will, and they've stated that we've made adequate yearly progress on all of our exams and among all of our subgroups. The district itself is considered a district in good standing, and all seven of our buildings are considered schools in good standing. So what does all of that really, well, before I get to that, I guess, so just to kind of back up and give you a timeframe in terms of how we got to where we are today, because the new testing cycle really began back in two thousand thirteen, so we're still sort of in the infancy stages, if you will, of the, these assessments, which have basically changed every year since two thousand thirteen, and will continue to change over the next few years. But in two thousand twelve, thirteen, we began implementation of ELA and math for grades K to eight. The following year, the high school saw Algebra I introduced and the ELA standards, but because that began with a freshman cohort, the examination didn't actually happen until that cohort of students became juniors. Fourteen, fifteen was geometry, fifteen, sixteen was Algebra II. So last year, sixteen, seventeen was really the sort of the first stable year where all of the exams had been in place ever at least one year. So first, we'll highlight the math and ELA programs and science programs, grades three through eight. And a few things, so I changed the layout of the presentation a little bit this year. First, I'll talk a little bit about where we stack up to some different districts, and then, rather than pull the exams apart and look at, like, all the math scores, all the ELA scores, and then talk about opt-out rates, and then talk about trends, I put together slides where everything is sort of summarized by grade level. I hope that makes it a little bit easier to follow how things go from year to year. So as you know, every year, Buffalo First Publication produces its list of top ten schools in upstate New York, and last year, we were one of the top ten. So I thought it'd be good to sort of just analyze where we stand in relation to those other schools. And you can see that for ELA, our proficiency rate stayed fairly flat, right, sixty-one percent this year compared to sixty-two percent last year, but our math dropped five percentage points from sixty-five to sixty. And what's interesting is many of the other schools rose, but the other one that had a drastic decline was another local school, Niskuna. So it's just interesting that where many of the schools saw increases or slight decreases, the two largest decreases were us and Niskuna. So I know that Bill Claremont has already reached out to Bill Wells to see if, because they use a different math program than we do, to see if there are some similarities in why the data saw decreases, whether they saw similar trends in terms of the reasons for the decrease. But also, you have to be a little bit careful looking at just the overall percentages. The one thing in the short time that we have had to look over the data, both through ELA and math, we've noticed, in working with Andy Baker, our ELA supervisor, and Bill Claremont, our math supervisor, there's some standards that say we performed well on last year, appearingly, right, where there was three or four questions. This year, there's only one question on that standard. So we've still performed well, but it has less of an impact. Conversely, where we had some standards last year that were maybe some of our weaker standards, there was only one question, but this year, there were three. So now, the impact sort of comes together, where you have fewer questions on your strong standards, more questions on your weaker standards. So that was one trend that we saw. Another trend that we saw, where there's some standards where we performed well in the past, there were multiple choice question standards. This year, they converted to free response, and our students didn't do as well. So we're taking a look at the questions themselves to see why were they able to successfully complete multiple choice questions on the same content, but weren't able to transfer that to a multiple choice, or to a free response setting. Those are a couple of the odd things that stood out right away. Like I said, we've only had a week to start digging through this, but those two surely showed as trends.
Dave, before you move on. I thought it was interesting, though, both Skinny Atlas and Niskuna had very low dropout rates, seven to eight percent.
Opt-out, for sure.
Opt-out, I mean, opt-out rates, sorry. And it's also interesting that Skinny Atlas has Ken Sluns as superintendent, who's former, you know, deputy commissioner of State Ed, and Niskuna has Caso Tancoro, who also was a deputy commissioner at State Ed, as their superintendent. And I don't know whether there's any correlation there, but are they doing something to encourage?
I can't speak to Skinny Atlas. I know Niskuna had, they sent out just the stock BOSI's communication before the exams, just explaining what the exams were, the changes in the exams. They did have, I think, a parent forum one night to answer questions folks might still have with the changes, but they, it's not, they didn't actively, I guess, promote participation. Our numbers actually, if you look, when we get to the slides, you'll see that our three through five numbers actually decreased. It's our middle school numbers that either stayed the same or slightly increased, especially at the eighth grade, our opt-out numbers were quite substantial. So I think we'll see a shift in those numbers this coming year as well. Yes?
Okay, I'm sorry, could you, could you explain to those of us who aren't as knowledgeable about the tests, what you mean by standards?
Okay, so there's two things at play here. There's the standards, which is essentially what kids need to know, and then there's the assessment that matches those standards. So the assessment questions are written, so the standards might be, you know, students are able to add within one to twenty. That's the standard. So then, when they write the assessment, they have to make sure that the questions only have kids computing between one to twenty. So the assessments are written to match the standards. The standards are what the student should know, the assessments are checking whether or not they do know.
Great, thank you.
Not the most elaborate explanation, but that's the simplest way to give it.
It's basically called the Common Core Standards, right? Is that, is that what?
Okay, so, yeah, the Common Core learning standards.
Standards, yeah, so.
Yes, which will be changing shortly.
When you see a learning standard.
So then, just to give you another comparison measure, we took a look at the same numbers stacked up against the other suburban council schools, and you'll see that in ELA, we're still the highest performing district in terms of our numbers there, and the math, we've dropped, where we were, again, I think, we were second last year, we've dropped down to sixth. But again, noticing that North Colony and Niskuna had some decreases, East Greenbush had a decrease, but then you look at, you know, Shenandoah had a slight uptick, and Saratoga had a slight uptick. So just trying to figure out, again, working with, I know Bill's already been in touch with some of the other supervisors to look at if they're seeing similar trends in terms of areas of strength continuing to be areas of strength, the areas of weaknesses flipping, and so forth, to try to help, because, you know, a five percent drop for us, and even looking at a four percent drop for Niskuna seems out of character, so really trying to get at what the root cause of that was.
The question I have is, you only have one opt-out rate listed, but we have two years listed for percentage. Is it the opt-out rate the same for both years?
It's the opt-out rate for this year.
Okay.
Right. I didn't go back and look at last year's.
I was just wondering, maybe the opt-out rate was either lower or higher, and that could be.
I know for, for most of the area's schools, it stayed fairly stable or shrunk a little. Niskuna was always fairly low. I think last year, they were at about ten percent or eleven percent. But like, I know Mahanasin has been as high as like sixty percent, so that number's fairly consistent. Scotia's always been high. There's just probably, there's a little fluctuation, but in terms of, I guess, the ranking order, I don't think things have changed much in terms of which districts are opting out versus which ones tend not to.
But it could play a role in the score.
Certainly, certainly. But I want, I'd like to think that, you know, most of those percentages are comparable, and I think these districts are all fairly large, so, you know, unless you have a particular group of student profile that's opting out, I think you still have a pretty good representative sample and should give you an idea of where your program stands.
But we don't have an idea of who opts out and who does.
Well, we looked at the very first year that we had the huge uptick in opt-outs. We looked, we did look at their previous year's score, and it was pretty evenly distributed between our level ones, twos, threes, and fours. So now, sort of go grade by grade, so what we're looking at on the left is just a quick pictorial of how students performed on that assessment, and then a five-year summary, if you will. And to me, again, it's very difficult to make sense of your proficiency numbers, because from any one year to the next, you know, your proficiency rate could go up, but you could sort of fall in terms of where you rank with other schools. Also, if you recall, in the last five years, they've said, you cannot compare this year's test directly to last year's test. They've said that for five years in a row now. So the proficiency numbers, to me, I mean, yes, they're meaningful, it's good to see whether we're making progress, but it's, I think it's more important to really look at the percentiles, to make sure that those are sort of falling in line with the trends that your proficiency rates are showing. So those, again, basically what a percentile means, if you're in the ninetieth percentile, that means you're outperforming ninety percent of the schools in the state and underperforming about ten percent.
I do have one question on this slide.
Go ahead.
And I don't know the answer. In two thousand fourteen, I believe, or thirteen, one of those years, the English Language Arts questions increased, and the time increased. Was that at the third grade level, too, or was that only in the high?
It was all grade levels.
It was all grade levels.
It was math.
So there doesn't, so there seems to be a correlation from two thousand thirteen, where they, they came back and they reduced the questions again and gave back the same amount of time. There seems to be a little bit of a correlation.
That could, could be one factor, but also, again, they, I mean, they've changed the structure of the exam pretty much every year. They, they move where the cut scores are fairly routinely. And when I say, the cut score itself might change, but they change the way the raw score converts to a scale score. So, you know, there's always this sort of playing with numbers, so it's really difficult to compare.
Right.
But I, I think you can see, though, okay, so last year, we were at the eighty-seventh percentile, and this year, we're at the ninetieth, so we have, in the pecking order, we've sort of moved up a little bit.
Right.
The same thing with the mean scale score. And the reason I like to present both of those is because, you know, your proficiency rate is simply how many level threes and how many level fours do you have. By looking at the mean scale score, it sort of gives you an indication of where you fall within those. So if, if on your mean scale score, like in this particular case, we're at the ninety-second percentile, but for proficiency, we're only at the ninetieth, that tends to signify that even though you have twenty-four percent level twos, enough of those must be high level twos to push your mean scale score up, and thus, your ranking narrow. So that's why I like to kind of have both those numbers as a reference. So we did have about ten percent opt-out in grade three, ELA. So grade four, pretty substantial drop in both proficiency rate and mean scale score. The opt-out rate is fourteen percent, which is pretty similar to last year. But you can see, again, you know, you look at your, the percentiles went, I mean, the proficiency rates, they grew, we saw an increase in a percentile, they decreased, so obviously decreased, they grow again, they decrease, so they send, tend to fall in line with each other. But, you know, I, there's, there has to be other factors at play here, other than just pure curriculum. Because if, if your curriculum hasn't necessarily changed, to go up, down, up, down, up, down, something else has to be at play. And that's why we're really looking at the structure of the tests, the questions themselves, because like I said, if things are strong one year, and there's five questions, and the next year, there's only one, but something that sort of was weak, there's one, and now there's five, that's going to completely flip your score the following year. So, you know, again, we're, every year, we pull the data apart, and we try to make adjustments based on that, but it's.
But you're dealing with a different group of students each year.
You're dealing with different groups of students. That's why I say, there's many compounding factors.
But I guess here's my question to that. If we look at those students later on in their, their career, so the two thousand thirteen, we fast forward five years, are they performing at a level that, that's adequate? And are these numbers at this level really indicative of how they're performing?
So if you look at, so let's get, we'll take a look at that. So grade three, right, so two thousand fifteen, they're in the ninety-third percentile, right? So that class would be in grade four in two thousand sixteen. Now they're in the ninety-fourth percentile. Then this year, they're in the eighty-ninth percentile. So that cohort of kids pretty much stayed where they were.
Right, right.
So.
So the test maybe is awful from year to year, but we're putting, it seems like we're putting a lot of energy into like, tweaking it from year to year.
I do think it, it does provide value. I mean, if you have a certain standard that shows that you're deficient.
Okay.
After two, three years, it's something you really need to take a closer look at. So, you know, we make minor adjustments from you. I wouldn't say, like, we don't overhaul an entire program based on these assessments, for sure, but it is worth looking at, again, just, you're always looking to make adjustments, and this is just one piece that we try to use to inform those adjustments. So grade six, you can see, again, you know, sort of, the last few years, we've, we're sort of leveled, and then this year, a pretty sizable drop. But again, going back here, that, that same cohort, eighty-seventh, and now they're down to the eighty-second, so, you know. Grade seven, consistently in the ninetieth percentile or above. Grade eight, consistently in the ninetieth percentile or above. So you can see, though, that means some of those prior-year students that were in the eightieth percentile are now all of a sudden in the high nineties.
Right, so is there a problem with that test for that age group?
But then also, you look at, okay, so now, there's other compounding factors. This particular grade had thirty-five percent opt-out. Is it?
That's true, too.
The scores are small.
You know, it starts to become, there's just so many confounding variables that, you know, we, we try to make as best sense we can, but we don't get too, too carried away. And this is another reason why we point to using other assessments, such as like I Ready this year, where there's standards-based assessments, students will take them three times a year, it'll pinpoint exactly where strengths and weaknesses are for each student, as opposed to trying to make some generalization of where programs are weak, and I think that'll give us much more useful data. Pushing through the math, pretty sizable decrease in grade three. Again, we're, we're taking a close look, couldn't tell you right now what exactly the decrease is, but if you look at the mean scale score, that didn't dip nearly as much, But if you look at the mean scale score, that didn't dip nearly as much. I mean, eighty-first percentile to eightieth percentile, whereas you have a ten-point dip basically in the proficiency rate, which tells me a lot of our low threes in the past sort of felt a high two is what happens there, right? Grade four, slight decrease. Again, looking at the mean scale score though, the percentile didn't change all that much, but it dropped ten points in the proficiency range. So basically, you know, that points out to us that we have a lot of sort of low three scores that are now becoming high two scores. Similarly for grade five. And then the middle school, similar to with the ELA, middle school, we start to see the uptick again, which, which again, it's the same cohort of kids. So if, if they're in a seventieth percentile, now all of a sudden they're in the eighty-eighth. There's more at play than just, it's not the kids, which was one of, points that out, right? So the opt-out numbers, you can see at the middle school are substantially higher again, twenty percent for sixth grade. Seventh and eighth grade are a little hard because we have quite a few number of students that don't take it. So in seventh grade, we have ten percent of our students don't take the exam because of the Regents, twenty-seven percent opt-out. So only sixty-three percent do take it. But even with that, you know, we're in the eighty-eighth percentile and very few schools in the state double accelerate. So if you were to throw that cohort of kids back in, right? But based on their Algebra I results, which all of those students scored eighty-five or higher. So you would assume they'd at least be a three or four, right? You know, that number jumps up substantially. And then the eighth grade, and this is one that you, when you look at the numbers, sort of like shock, you know, only thirty percent are proficient. You're like, whoa, that's awful. But then you look at, okay, only forty percent actually took the test. And then further, when you look at the percentiles, yeah, I mean, we're still in the eighty-fifth percentile. So clearly the rest of the state has this similar performance pattern of numerous kids taking the Regents and not being counted in. So at face value, thirty percent's awful, but when you look here, even the mean scale score, only ten percent of the schools outperformed us. And there are schools that don't have acceleration, so they're in the mix. So when you consider all of that, it's actually, our eighth grade numbers are quite strong. So there it is. If we did adjust it, it would jump up to sixty-three percent. Taking a look at students with disabilities and Kathy and her staff should be very proud of these results. When you first look at a proficiency rate of eighteen percent, you're probably like, oh, that's, that's quite low. But when you start to compare to other districts, and I put the state comparison up there, but people are like, wow, you know, if we compare ourselves to the rest of the state, we should definitely be higher than that, right? But in two thousand seventeen, we're eighteen percent, the state's at nine percent. But if you take a look at the top ten from the Buffalo First, half of those schools are at or below the state, right? So eighteen percent stacks up quite favorably in terms of how our students with disabilities are performing on these assessments compared to other schools in the state.
I have a question. With students with disabilities, are there any kinds of accommodations given to them?
Certainly.
Increased testing time and?
So there's no more increased testing time because it's unlimited testing time for everybody. So that modification is no longer relevant. But some students have tests read to them, some students have separate location, some students have a scribe, yeah, so those. But that's true for all of the districts. And it's based on what a student's IEP has on.
Certainly.
Sure. Math, similar, not quite as high, but nonetheless, if you take a look at, we're well above the state and some other schools. You know, I like to point out that Niskuna's pretty far below us on both of these slides, so.
Do we have a high opt-out rate for?
Again, I had, I didn't run it this year, but the last two years, our opt-out rates for the different cohorts or the different subgroups, special educations, economically disadvantaged, all of our different male, female and so forth, it's pretty.
Consistent.
Consistently distributed, uniformly distributed.
If students are in an outside placement, are their scores included also?
They are. These are district-wide numbers, so yes. Science gets all the glory. Ninety-seven percent proficient at grade four. And there they use more of a zero to one hundred scale, so it's a little bit easier to make sense of. But our averages stayed consistently, you know, in the high eighties over the years. For some reason, they didn't compute scores back in two thousand thirteen, but were able to tell you the percent proficient. I guess it was too much to ask them to average it up for you. Grade eight, similar results. And again, you can see even for the grade eight science, the opt-out numbers are still pretty substantial. Our, our eighth grade, last year's eighth grade students, it was, for no matter what the exam was, they were opt-out, yeah. So that's it on the three through eight testing. The Regents Program, and I've sort of combined two different ideas here. I put together my slides from January to recap based on a question at the last meeting and then also looking at the exams themselves. So what I did, I had not done this in the past, but I think it's important to. I, I did break down each exam by course to sort of give you perspective on how the different courses are performing. But not only that, taking a look at what impact our major summative examinations do have on a student's final average. So we give midterm exams for some courses, Regents exams. And depending on whether they give both or not, it's either one-fifth or one-sixth of their overall average. And I know the question always comes up, so what, what impact does that really have? So total, there are sixty-two summative assessments, either midterms or Regents. And there's three that sort of are alarming. So we'll work on those three, but I don't know that that necessarily means we need to overhaul what we were doing because three out of sixty-two. And I'll speak a little bit to things that we're going to do to hopefully try to address those needs. So for English, and this, you know, if you look at the averages here, don't forget, so the state considers eighty-five mastery. So for, you know, three out of our four levels, they're well into the mastery. And then for our eleven-three, which again, these are our struggling learners, they typically have classes only of size fifteen as part of our Excel program. Much smaller classes, they need much more time to get through material. So that's, obviously they're going to perform a little bit lower, but they're still well into the passing range, which is great. So when you look at what impact the Regents exam has, three out of the four, the exam actually has a positive impact. So the eleven-three has a negative impact. And the way that we can begin to address those type of things is, again, to look at what are our expectation for these students? Even though they might need more time to get through the material, are we pushing them, you know, as hard as we can to achieve higher rates on the Regents exams? Not that the Regents is be all end all, but this, it does speak to, a little bit to rigor in that you can use summative assessments to ask yourself the question, are we challenging students' thinking in new and exciting ways? Are we stretching their thinking? So we're just taking a close look at, are we really stretching their thinking as much as we can?
I like that format, just so you know.
Then we take a look at the math exams. And Algebra I, which if you remember, when it was first given, was sort of all over the place. Our scores have actually increased each year since that exam's been giving, given. At the high school, our one-year algebra course, the students are now up to eighty-three point five. They're approaching that eighty-five threshold, which even under the old integrated algebra, which everyone agrees was a much, much easier exam, we were, we didn't ever hit that eighty-five threshold, so we're getting there. And I think this, if you look at the impact, some are positive, some are negative, but they're all below half a point. And most of them are pretty darned close to zero. So I would say that, that, you know, that exam pretty well matches what the kids should be doing in each of those courses. Even for our, our stretch students in the Excel program that take two years, you know, their midterm is spot-on. There's, has no impact on their grade, which I guess, I mean, that's really what you strive for, right? Is to write a summative assessment that the kids perform the same on that they do throughout the course of the year. And then the Regents is fairly minimal.
Why, before you go past that slide, you knew you were going too fast for me.
Well, I know you want to get to geometry.
You know where I'm going to go.
I know you want to get to geometry, so go ahead.
No, well, no, I'm waiting. Lab school math. Why is there such a significant difference in the, if you go to English eleven, they're right on target with the other traditional school, but when you go to the math?
Okay, so a couple of things to keep in mind. Lab school does not level with math. So your accelerated students are taking level two and they're not necessarily taking a Regents exam. Also, some of the students that are in lab school level one, if they were in the regular school, quite possibly would have been in the Excel program. So it's really a blend, you, you have to consider that the lab school program for math is really a blend of students that could have either been in Algebra I or the Excel program.
I, I think that would be interesting to see the breakout of how many students would have fallen into an Excel program.
And we can do that by looking, I can certainly look that, just based on sort of how they performed in the eighth grade and their state test.
Ten-point difference. I mean, it's pretty significant.
For sure. And then for geometry, you can see that, again, for three of our four levels, we're very, very close to or above mastery. One level continues to struggle and I'll speak to that in a second. In terms of the impact, both the midterm and the Regents for those, those three levels are all fairly close to zero. I mean, even the negatives are pretty close to zero. So I want to talk a little bit about this geometry course that our students, this is the second year that they've continued to struggle. The average has actually gone up slightly this year, even though it's still at sixty-eight point seven. So let me just give you some background on where, where this course came from. So if you recall, about seven years ago, eight years ago, we used to have a, a year and a half algebra course and a year and a half geometry course. And so the students took three years to take two Regents exams. And then we said, okay, if you want that third Regents exam, you're going to have to do it in one year. So now we're taking algebra and geometry, taking three years to do. But we're asking you to do, at the time, Algebra II TRIG, which was the most difficult of the three exams. We're asking students to do that in one year. So no students took advantage of that. So what we did was we got rid of the year and a half course. We had all students, other than the two-year Excel kids, take Algebra I in one year. And then all students that were in that path continued on to take geometry in one year. And that's where this lowest level geometry sort of grew from. Under the old format, those students were scoring in like the seventy-five to eighty range on average. The new format, clearly they're not reaching that. So in working with, again, Mr. Claremont, we've determined that really the exam has gotten harder. But the other levels have figured it out. And taking a look at the rigor of that course, we think it needs to be much, much closer to the AB than it does to where it is right now.
So why?
Because the process that worked in the past is essentially the students went through all of the material that the Regents level took, that, but they sort of de-emphasized the proof aspect of it. That model no longer works with this new structure. So we've increased the rigor of that course for this year to be more in lines with the Geometry AB course. Still not quite the same level. So in other words, the assessments and the, the homeworks will be at a slightly lower level, but the material itself is not going to be modified nearly as much.
So I do have a question. So Geometry AB is just basic Regents geometry, correct?
So the structure we sort of use is, we, we'd stay in line with the AP sort of monikers. So students that are on track to take calculus as seniors are sort of in the BC track. Students that are going to take pre-calculus are in the AB track. And students that'll finish out with Algebra II are just in the no alphabet track at the end.
So why did we, for geometry, the last category, we didn't break it out for Excel and lab school?
There is no Excel.
There's no.
Lab school doesn't prepare for the exam. They only prepare for level one. We do have some students take it, but they're not taught explicitly for that exam. So they're treated no differently than, they're treated as walk-ins in terms of the way their reports come out. But that's a course we know, we, we've restructured for this year because what worked in the past in getting these students through is no longer working. So we've restructured the course.
Right, I guess.
And I think I'll show in the next slide the rationale for this course. Like I said, in, in eight years ago, we had the year and a half course. Students were then unable to take Algebra II TRIG because to do that in one year is not realistic when you've stretched the first two. So what we've done is.
Actually, so all students took a year and a half? We said, it used to be.
No, we had a cohort of about a hundred students that took Algebra I over a year and a half.
A year and a half.
Geometry over a year and a half. And then they were locked out of that third Regents exam because it wasn't realistic for them to take that most difficult exam over one year. So now they're doing the algebra over one year, the geometry over one year, and they're doing the Algebra II, which I'll show on the next slide, over two years. And this has actually proven to be very successful. So if you take a look at the Algebra II B, those are the students that take it over two years. We have seventy-three students in that group. Those are, that seventy-three students would not have taken that exam at all eight years ago. And they're highly successful. Their, their averages are seventy-seven point eight. They're all passing two years running now.
Out of the geometry students who took it over a year and a half, out of the hundred that you indicated?
Well, this, so again, we're going back eight years.
Eight years, but it was a.
And it was a different test.
Mainly Excel population, even though it wasn't Excel.
No, the Excel population, so they had, you still had your Excel kids that were taking algebra over two years. And then they might have taken a real-world math class or a geometry class that did not prepare for the Regents exam. And most of those students stopped after that third year of math. But what, again, you can see what this is allowing us to do. I mean, we're working on figuring out that geometry piece, but the Algebra II piece is working. We have, again, seventy-three students that eight years ago would have never touched that third exam, are now walking out with an advanced Regents diploma, which they did not have access to before.
And I guess going back to the geometry, which lends itself to my concern about the Regents score counting twenty percent of the grade.
There's, so there's three out of sixty-two that we're sort of concerned about and we're addressing those, but.
Right, but even so, you have sixty-eight, so the students last year, the average score for the geometry Regents was sixty-eight percent.
Right.
Their average grade for the three-quarters was eighty-one, which means some scored lower than the sixty-eight percent. Counted their Regents twenty percent, so that eighty-one went somewhere.
Lowered their score by two and a half points overall, right.
For some, it could have been more.
Again, we think that speaks as much to the course being not rigorous enough as much as it does to the Regents. So we're going to address the rigor piece and we'll see where we are. So for global history and geography, you can clearly see that, again, the students are performing very, very well. Almost a ninety average in three out of the four. Again, the, the area of concern would be the Excel Global Ten with the negative impact on their score, being almost two, being just slightly more than two full points. So again, taking a look at, is the rigor, similar to the English eleven-three, is the rigor there where it needs to be? For United States history and government, it's less noticeable. The actual, the midterm actually has more of an impact negatively than the Regents. So that's something we need to take a look at. Is that midterm realistic for that level student when they're performing as well as they are on the Regents exam? Science, again, Regents has positive impacts in both areas, negative impact on both areas of the midterm. And similar with living environment, most of them have basically negligible impact. Earth's Excel Science Ten, you know, close to a one-point impact. But in that case, the midterm basically balances that off, so very minimal.
And with lab school science, do you have any concerns that it's six points?
So again, lab school science takes it over a year and a half.
Right, which you would think that that would give you the opportunity to improve those scores.
Sure. So I can, but again, if you look at the straight biology, living environment, I'm looking at quarter, I'm hyped on. So it's about six points lower. So I can, again, we're still working and I'll talk with Mrs. Gagne about that particular item. Chemistry, fairly even. Again, more impact on the midterm than on the final, but they're all fairly close to, you know, as long as you stay within that sort of point-five range either way, it's really negligible impact. Physics, similar. And actually, e- even though it, it does have a little bit of a negative impact, our, our physics numbers in terms of our averages outperform many, many, many schools in the area and in the state. That's one of those exams that's tricky because, as you know, this is a senior exam that seniors aren't always willing to take come June.
And physics is an elective.
And it's an elective. But it sounds like a great elective in September, not necessarily so much in June.
I'm just, I'm just interested though in the cohort of students that take AP physics and how their, their grades are that much higher. But a lot of times people don't take it because they think they'll do better in regular physics, so they don't take AP, but that's not, it doesn't seem to be the case. And it's an elective.
It isn't, they're both electives, sure.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Okay, so that's Regents exams. AP has no impact whatsoever on final average. Happy to report though that our numbers in this continue to just amaze me. Every year, not only does the number of students go up, the number of exams written go up. We're closing in on a thousand exams. So, you know, if, if you figure on average, that's three college credits, that's three thousand college credits. We're sort of saving across the board at whatever they're charging these days for credits, a lot of money. credits, a lot of money. So 468 students total, though, you know, that's roughly 30% of our kids are taking at least one AP exam. By comparison, it was funny, I was at a presentation where Shenandoah Hall was highlighting their dashboard, and they happened to throw their AP slide up, and they were like so proud that they had 812 exams written, not students, 812 exams. Now, they have 8,800 students. We have 968 exams written for 1,600 students. So, I mean, it's quite impressive, the number of students we have taking exams. And I think that's, you know, speaks to two things. One, we have an open enrollment policy, which allows students to challenge and take AP courses if they'd like, whereas many schools, if you don't reach certain grade thresholds, you can't take AP courses. But also just the caliber of our students that want to push themselves and take these courses continues to be amazing. So I'll just run through those quick. Our averages far surpass New York State and global data when you take a look at them. So I'll just run through them quick, but it's just amazing, the number of college credits these kids are earning because of this. And then finally, we have our graduation data. So our graduation rate, sort of unofficially, because they're still compiling, but based on what we've been able to pull so far, it looks at about 94%, which is almost a 1% increase from last year. We had 365 graduates. That does include our August graduates in our number here. So just kind of looking at the different categories, it's disappointing in that when you look at, the state really only counts, when you look at that 94%, that's your Advanced Regents diploma and your Regents diploma. Local diploma doesn't count. IEP diploma doesn't count. Still enrolled doesn't count. So the student can graduate a year later. Right now, doesn't count. Dropped out's the number we're really focusing on. We did have 11, and when you look at those numbers, it's interesting the way they count dropped out. One of the students of the 11 is actually deceased, so I'm not sure how that counts as a dropout, but it does according to State Ed. Five are enrolled in GED programs or similar type programs. So yes, they no longer with us, but they are still trying to achieve a high school diploma through other mechanisms. And then there are five students, all five of which basically just stopped attending school, so after 20 days, they're sort of dropped from our rolls. But in looking at all five, all five were identified early on. We knew who these students were, and all five either suffered from mental health issues or substance abuse issues. And there were students that we've worked with them and their families. So it's, you know, it's not that we're forgetting these dropout students, we're not taking a close look at them. We know exactly who they are, and because of early warning indicators that we're using, we knew early on that we needed some interventions. Unfortunately, interventions don't always work. One of the things that we're implementing this year, under Kristen Connor's leadership, though, is we are having ninth-grade dedicated counselors in the hope that, as students transition from middle school to high school, they'll have, you know, concentrated effort on just ninth graders, where they can help them transition easier into the high school, because usually that's where, you know, if you don't have a successful first introduction into the high school, obviously, you know, it's very difficult to continue on 10, 11, and 12. So we do have additional programs that we're putting in place, and we have a focus on this type, you know, the students that have dropped out, and we'll continue to work on getting that number down, because 11's still too many. Charmaine?
On the Excel program numbers across the board, if, as you evaluate the numbers there in the drops and perhaps bringing those numbers up or assisting those students in different ways, is that done through the subject supervisors?
For sure.
Okay. So each of the, so that for English and for math, et cetera, it's done through the supervisor?
Yes.
Okay. I, I don't know how other board members feel, but also, based on the numbers that you projected, I'd be interested in hearing more of an update, perhaps in the spring, on how programs may have changed for that population.
We can talk about how the programs have changed. The impact, we obviously won't see until-
You'll obviously see the numbers until next year, I understand.
For sure, for sure.
But, just to get more of an update on-
On some of the areas that Davis-
What kind of analysis, do you have any more information? Do you have any more insights? Has been any kind of adjustment? Just, just because I noticed consistently that that population was lower, so.
For sure. I mean, they're always going to be lower. It's a matter of how much can we shrink that gap between the two?
I understand that.
For sure.
Thank you.
It's, it's interesting to see how the Regents scores compare with the class scores. Is there any way at the middle school level to make that kind of an assessment, to see whether the ELA and the math scores for the students that are taking the test, I recognize there are a lot of opt-outs, but whether they correlate with the grades that the students are getting in class?
I'm going to say, just based on the percentages, that they don't. I mean, knowing that the number of students at the middle school that are on honor roll and so forth, that number certainly doesn't match the numbers of fours that we have. We could do, I don't know how meaningful it would be. It's, it's not meant to be, I mean, all you could really compare, I guess, is, I mean, what would you compare a Level 4 to in the classroom? What would you compare a Level 3 to? Well, because it's not, like with the Regents exams, if students get an 85, you can compare that to their score in the class, but if you have a Level 3 on the ELA exam, like what compare, what would our range be in the classroom that would sort of match that?
I guess I'm just thinking of whether there's-
I mean, you can artificially come up with ones, but-
You know, whether you have students that, in class, they have, I'm going to make up some numbers here, but if you have a student that's got an average in the 90s and yet is performing on the test at a, you know, a 1 or a 2, like where, if there was a disconnect, would it be worth looking at?
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look, but I don't think we'll, it's going to be hard to correlate one way or the other, but I don't think we'll find too many students with 90s that are getting ones. But we can certainly take a look.
What are your, what are the next steps that you have in mind in terms of using the data from the?
So we look at a couple of things. We look at item analysis reports, which sort of tell you question by question, things that are tripping students up. We look at trend reports to see if, again, there are standards that are consistently tested that we're performing one way or the other on. Those are really the two main pieces that we look at. Like I said, for the, I'm going to put much more stock, I think, once we get iReady up and running, in those reports, because they're much more comprehensive than what the state gives us. They're given three times a year, and they're going to give us information about individual students, as opposed to trying to make generalizations based on a single test that everybody takes and that, especially the middle school. We still have a lot of students not taking.
And even the kids who do take it, you know, you have to wonder if they see half of their classmates not taking the test, and you're 13-years-old, how seriously are you taking that test?
And also, keep in mind, just to forecast ahead to next year at this time, the test is completely changing again this year. It's going from three days to two days, so we're not going to be able to compare again. But I think, again, those percentiles, where do we stand with the other schools in the state, is really the only measure that we can reliably use.
It really makes it hard to even compare from year to year.
Right, and that's why I say, we try looking at the trend reports, but the, you know, one year, it's heavy on multiple choice for this standard. The next year, it's on critical response, and it goes back to multiple choice. Students are going to perform differently on multiple choice than they are on critical response. So is it a true indication of they don't know the standard? Or is it a true indication of the type of question is what's driving the scores going one way or the other?
If the results of iReady are what you expect them to be, would that be a more, a better way to compare from year to year?
Certainly, and the score, the other nice thing about that is it, the score sort of carries with the student, so those assessments aren't given at a particular grade level. So they're, they're adaptive in that, it's, you know, sort of like when you go try shoes on. You think you're a size 10, so you first try on the 10, but it's too small. Then you try on the 11, but it's too big, and then you try on a 10 and 1/2, and it fits perfect. So the way these assessments work, you're in third grade, so it tries to start you at third grade, and then it asks questions, and it just kind of keeps leveling until it figures out exactly where you are. The next time you come back to that assessment, you start there, and it tries to level you off again. So the one, you know, disappointing piece about the state assessments, so you look at our special ed data, okay, so the student scored a 1, well, that's because they're in fifth grade, so they have to take the fifth grade test. But now, it doesn't give me where they truly stand. With the iReady, it's going to level them out, so yeah, age-wise, they're a fifth grader, but their skills are at a third grade level, so now I know exactly where I can address these deficits and start moving forward. Just knowing the student's a 1, where do I start? Do I start at a third grade, a fourth grade, and so?
So once we implement iReady, why do we need this?
Because it's mandatory, but-
Yeah, same. I guess my, I'm going to go back to the Regents and the midterm and the, the amount of, how much we weigh those, those scores. I still have concerns with that, that we count those two tests as 20% if they have both a midterm and a Regents exam. And based on some of the numbers that you've shown, there's definitely a gap somewhere in either a midterm that's way too hard, when they're getting 97 on the Regents exam or the AP exam, which is, I don't know if that's harder than the Regents exam, but I would hope so. Or the other way around, where they're doing well in the class and then getting a low score on the Regents. What is your thought on how we're going to move forward with that?
Every year, we do start with this discussion at the supervisors' meetings, and they bring it back to the departments. And just also, knowing from past history, schools that went away from, use physics as an example, they, it's sort of knee-jerk reaction, one-year physics results weren't that great, so everybody said, we're not going to count the physics in our final exam. And the next year, the schools that did that, their kids' performance on the physics exams plummeted. Because again, you know, seniors at that point, now you're telling me this exam doesn't mean anything? Okay? So I mean, you have to be a little bit careful in that, you know, if you devalue an assessment, what's the incentive for students to do well on it?
Well, if you compare from year to year, and it's a consistent trend-
Right. But again, we've had three out of 62 exams. So it's basically three out of 62 exams. One of the exams is brand-new, it's only in the second year. We've clearly identified areas that we need to fix within that course. We'll see how that goes, and we'll continue to push those other two levels to see if we can put them more in line with the other courses.
In the midterm exams, we create, so if we see that they're too difficult-
Right, we have control of the midterms.
-we can modify that, obviously.
Right. And, and I'm not even saying that we should modify the midterm, but should we count it as 10%? I, I think two tests through a whole year, counting 20% of a student's grade is, is a heavy weight, and here we are, we tried to emphasize that it's not about test-taking, but when we give 20% of a grade in two tests, we are saying that, yes, we emphasize testing, and we teach to that test. We do. There's no way around it. We teach to a test. We teach to the Regents grade that we post up there. And I'm not saying that that's wrong, but I don't necessarily think that we need to count those two tests as 20%. It's just, it's a philosophy that, you know, I think that we should be open and afford to discuss.
But I'd be somewhat careful in saying we teach to the test, because certain levels, the test is sort of just an afterthought. You know, our honors courses, they're preparing for much, much higher than the test. The test is an afterthought. Our APs courses aren't even structured towards those tests. The students just happen to take it at the end.
But we did emphasize where we fell in the Buffalo Top 10, and how our math scores and our English scores were.
Well, that's 3 through 8, that's totally different than Regents.
No, it's ELA and, and the math, but that was emphasizing a test score. That's what we just did. And so I just want to, and I'm not trying to-
No, but I mean, those are the only comparable measures we have, so that's why I put them up there. Again, I don't, it, it gives us, I guess, pause to take a look at things, and that's what we do with our supervisors' group. You know, I sit with them, and we take a look, and we make adjustments as necessary. They work with their departments to, to get recommendations from them. But again, we're really, really careful not to make knee-jerk reactions based on one year's worth of assessments.
Right.
The geometry exam is still only two years out, because you can't count the first year, because students took both.
Right, but knowing that it was going to be a new common core assessment, we still counted it as 10%, knowing that there was going to be a curve.
But again, I did, I did the suburban council summary a couple of years ago, and all the schools but one in the suburban council are doing the same thing at the time.
Uh, no, there were some that didn't count them at all, and there were some that counted it less.
Avery Park is the only one that didn't count them at all. Some might have been a little less, but-
Less.
By and large, schools use them as their final exam.
They do, but they were counted as less in some of them. So I'm, all I'm saying is, if we can come back and revisit those areas that you've identified, that you think are areas that need to be looked at, and if, like, in a month or so, whatever, within this short period of time, we can get an update as to what the plan is for that.
I think a month is probably too ambitious.
Too ambitious.
Yeah, and it's on our-
Jody, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
I said, I think a month is a little ambitious.
I mean, it's on our first supervisor's agenda. It will take the supervisors' time to work through the departments, because they obviously don't make the decisions in a vacuum, right? So-
Right, right. But we, we've talked about this for a while.
Actually, they used to count, they, they used to count more, actually. They reached 1/6th the final grade, so midterm was 1/6, and the Regents was 1/6.
That's how it is. It is, and so 16-
16%.
Right, if there's just 1, there's 20%. If there's 1.
And really, I remember my son being killed by the midterm on chemistry, and it really did a job on his final grade, but I mean, that's the way it was.
So maybe, if you give, just give us an update at some point-
Sure.
And when the board could expect a meaningful analysis would be helpful. But, you know, I, I can't set that for you, but if it would be helpful to know when it would be-
I mean, whether or not the changes work-
Not right now, but some point.
I know, we certainly won't know whether the changes work for a year, and even then, again, it's one year that, one year does not make a trend, two years doesn't make a trend. But we'll continue to make adjustments as we need to, based on input from supervisors and their teachers.
But we do have, we do have multiple years of data. I mean, I know the geometry Regents is-
For some exams, not for-
Right.
For math exams, we certainly don't, and for the ELA's only two years old as well.
And for the exams that keep changing, I mean, why can't we make a change in the percentage?
Just for that course?
If it's going to negatively affect, you know, the student's grades.
Part of the problem is, we don't know whether it's going to negatively affect. So the one year, I know everybody was concerned that the algebra was going to hurt our kids this year, and it ended up being a positive impact. So, I mean, you can't make the decision after the test is given.
Right, you have to do it before.
You have to do it beforehand. So you're, now you're trying to play, you know, Mr. Wizard and figure out, is the test this year going to be here, or is it going to be here? So, again, I, I think, is 3 out of 62 an area for concern? Certainly, but I don't think it's reason to sort of blow everything up, because 3 out of 62 aren't performing the way we want them to either. So just very quickly, then, the areas of focus. Most of these were outlined in Jody's goals presentation, but obviously, I'm already working with supervisors to take a look at the data and how we can change some curricular and instructional goals. Continue to provide support for AIS and RTI, and for 3 through 8 this year, we will be able to incorporate, or K through 8, be able to incorporate iReady. Program reviews are underway this year in math, social studies, and library. And it's interesting, because again, math, you kind of take a look at the past five years and try to project forward to the next five years, but the standards are changing, so it's going to be a little bit of a guessing game there. Continue to refine local assessments to meet the rigors of the standards, and again, I think I spoke to that. We did identify that that particular geometry class, we need to increase the type of questions we're asking students throughout the year if we want them to be more successful. Collaborative goal planning. We're going to begin to implement the new social studies and science frameworks. Again, the next-generation ELA and math standards are set to come out at the September board meeting, is when they will enroll those, at the Board of Regents. Continue to explore ways that technology can enhance student learning, and obviously, the one-to-one program's going to put that at the forefront. Implement K5 Technology Skills, scope, and sequence. So last year, we developed skills that all students that leave K5 should have, and then building upon that, take a look at what that means in terms of the grade six through eight computer science continuum. That is all I have.
Thank you.
If that's not enough.
It wasn't that bad, was it?
Can I just make a comment? I know it's a lot of people's time and commitment for the evening, but it's lovely for me, I want to speak for the board, to see you all here. And I know you can't make every board meeting, but I would welcome as many as you can attend.
Actually, there was a time when it was mandatory. I didn't see it. No, a long time ago, a long time ago.
I know, I know.
That is great. I love it.
I notice your presence and I appreciate it.
What'd you want to say, Lynn? You were saying something. What'd you want to say?
I just said, there was a time when it was mandatory.
Oh. I knew you had something.
I would never say that, but I...
Well, no, it's neither deny, but that's what...
But it makes, for me, it makes a difference. Your presence here, for me, as a board member, makes a difference.
At this time, we'd like to recognize visitors that are here to discuss an item on the agenda. Does anybody here wants to discuss an item on the agenda? No? Okay. Item number seven, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one through three.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Is it the green team's?
Yes, and we want to thank the green team for their donation. It was appreciated.
I just wanted to also, oh, sorry, I'm not on, point out that I think it's the municipal cooperation agreement. I think the BCSD address is not correct in that, on page four.
Okay. Do they have ninety items?
They still say ninety items.
Okay.
We've been working to change that for a while, so...
Just caught my eye, thought I'd throw it out there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good catch, because I looked at those.
Item number eight, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personal action items one through twenty-five.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item number nine, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through thirty-two.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Lots of changes. At this time, the board would like to recognize visitors on a non...
Number ten.
Oh, number ten, I skipped over ten. There were so many pages. Thank you.
Don't make Kathy nervous.
We'll go back. You know what? I'm probably missing one.
It's page thirteen.
All right. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item number one.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll go back to eleven. Are there, at this time, the board would like to recognize any visitors here on a non-agenda item. Come on up. State your name, although we know your name, but state your name anyway.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, the people in the community can hear you in the recording.
I'm going to make a statement like I have to.
Okay. And the mic comes out if you want to pull it out or I think it can adjust.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the board.
State your name. Yeah, state your name.
My name is Peter Rawich.
Thank you.
And tomorrow, I'll begin my thirty-seventh year of teaching first grade at the Glenmont Elementary School. I became a National Board Certified Teacher in early childhood four years ago, and I was a member of the preschool through second-grade English Language Arts Standards Review Committee last summer. The New York State Education Department charged our committee of fourteen early childhood educators and parents with reviewing and revising the Common Core state standards for our youngest learners. I believe in childhood, and my concern is the developmental appropriateness of state ed's proposed next-generation learning standards for preschool through second grade. The Regents are scheduled to vote on the new standards next Monday, September eleventh. Decades of research have established that childhood is a period from birth to age eight. And during this period, children go through predictable stages of development, each at their own rate. Children learn how to walk, talk, draw, count, read, write at different times. And if you have children, grandchildren, siblings, students, or kids in your neighborhood, this is not news to you. The proposed next-generation early English Language Arts standards state that all, all kindergarten children should be able to read at or above grade level by the end of the school year. And the mathematics standards state that all kindergarten children should be able to count to one hundred by ones by the end of the school year. There is no learning theory or research that supports these standards. The original Common Core state standards were created in two thousand nine by workgroups that consisted primarily of people from state education departments, education reform organizations, testing businesses, and college professors. Early childhood experts did not participate in that work. Creating standards based on the expectation that all young children will develop at the same rate from year to year is completely unfounded. State eds' attempt last summer to revise the flawed Common Core state standards resulted in slightly altered standards that are no better than the originals. The revised standards make clear that the recommendations of the P-2 ELA Standards Review Committee to allow children to learn at their own rate, to learn through play, and to teach the whole child went unheeded. In two thousand twelve, the New York State Early Learning Guidelines was published by the New York State Early Childhood Advisory Council as a resource for people who work with children between birth and five years of age. The guidelines describe the typical growth in five areas of development, including physical, social-emotional, approaches to learning, cognition, and language. The Education Department should have continued that important work, and a panel of early childhood experts should have been convened to further develop a learning continuum for preschool through second grade. A learning continuum is a sequence of skills that build upon each other. For example, children generally need to be able to identify letters and sounds before they can read short words. And children need to understand the value of individual numbers before they can add them together. With a learning continuum, parents and teachers can identify which skills children have and which ones they still need to learn. Progress can be observed, assessed, monitored, and reported. And I've included one example of a learning continuum in my handout to you. Rigorous standards, as described in the preface of the two thousand seventeen revised standards, are meant to be challenging. They are also inflexible. A learning continuum is both challenging and flexible. It frees young children to learn and grow without curriculum calendars, high-stakes testing, or labels that identify them as below, at, or above grade level. We cannot allow childhood to be co-opted by the stated goal of college and career readiness. The New York State Regents need to truly initiate what Chancellor Rosa called "a thoughtful and deliberate process to reimagine our educational framework for English Language Arts, mathematics, and all of the other areas of child development." We all want what is best for our children. I urge the members of the school board to contact the Regents and tell them to reject the new preschool through second-grade standards and replace them with a learning continuum that is developmentally appropriate. We need an educational framework that honors childhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Future meeting and events. We have an audit committee member, meeting on Tuesday, September nineteenth. We have our next board meeting at Glenmont. Is it the same date on Saturday?
Same date, yes.
Oh, so I guess we're going to Glenmont right after that. Glenmont on September...
No, it's going to be there at Glenmont.
Oh, audit's going to be, okay.
Yeah.
So, we'll have an audit committee meeting at five and Glenmont board meeting at six. Wednesday, October fourth is our next executive session at six, board meeting at seven. Wednesday, October eleventh is a community forum for the district's strategic planning. And Wednesday, October eighteenth is our next scheduled board meeting at Slingerlands Elementary.
Can I just mention, because a number of us may miss that community forum, I'm not sure, I don't know if you want to film it or not, but I'm just wondering how, because I think Christine and I won't be there and Holly might not be there and Meredith, and I don't, I imagine you don't want to change the date. Is, how might you, is there a way to capture that?
Or is there a way to change the date?
I don't want to honestly, Phil, I don't want to cause, but just the thing about that, because the four board members won't be present.
I mean, I could see if Nick was available.
Just something to consider. I don't want to be overly cumbersome or we can just get the other board members to relay the information to us, but it seems, it's something I hate to miss, but I won't be here.
But we, did we say that's where they're going to break into small groups, potentially? And then we only have, like, one board member, possibly two, that can attend? Or you're not...
She won't be there, yeah.
Usually, usually after small groups, they break out and report out to the group. So, so that's something either that we might be able to record or I could report back to the board because I intend to be...
So, Joellen, we will have several communications facilitators there that will be recording the information from each of the groups, correct? So, a summary of that, so...
That'd be great. So, if each small group gets...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Before we adjourn, because the Regents' vote is on Monday, is this something that we might want to discuss as a board now? Or is this something that, you know, we would act on as individuals?
Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, I feel that this is the first time we've heard it, but usually, they go, when the Regents are proposing something, they have meetings throughout the state where, you know, opportunities for public input before they make a final decision on...
And I actually looked and tried to find stuff on their website and it was like, this whole vote doesn't exist. I, maybe somebody else can find it, but I could not.
Well, they provided opportunities for public input after the debut on one of the groups, and we had some parents in the district and other teachers. So, I think their opportunity to provide input happened quite a while ago.
It's been almost a year since they initially proposed.
Right.
And there were meetings that BOSIs, I know, had to...
Right, those last year.
Different BOSIs offered them at various times for input on that as well.
Right, because there were Regents' members that attended.
Yeah.
Without supplemental material and time to kind of go over it, it would be hard for me to suggest that the board maybe take a group vote, but that would be just my opinion.
I would suggest that if, as individuals, we want to reach out to them.
I need to know the question, though, Dave, since it sounds like you're very familiar with it.
Much more so with the math than the ELA standards, but go ahead. I mean, I was on the math rewrite committee, but, so, I'm not nearly as familiar with the ELA.
Well, I guess, what is your thought on how it's going to impact K through two? And do, do we find that there's enough time in the classroom now where we're having the ability to learn things at their own rate? And how significant do we think this is going to impact those students and is it going to be problematic?
I mean, I don't think you're going to see much of a change between what's happening now. There are very subtle shifts. So, you know, those that are finding the new, the current standards problematic are not going to find relief necessarily in the new standards. But, you know, by and large, the, you know, obviously, the committee that convened, there were some folks that felt that a continuum was more appropriate, but not enough of those folks on that committee. So, I guess I'll defer to the parents that were on that committee, the administrators that were on that committee, and the teachers that were on that committee. I mean, it sounds like the majority voice is held true.
I mean, there is research out there that shows that kids develop at different rates and, and maybe some kids are reading when they go into kindergarten, others aren't just by the fact of their, you know, their developmental level. But usually, by the time they reach, and I think, I remember reading, you know, by third grade, there's, they equalize out, you know, the ones that didn't catch up and...
But having not had a chance to review this, it's hard to...
I mean, research shows by third grade, if kids aren't pretty much reading on the level they attend, the gap continues to widen.
Right.
I mean, that's...
But up to that.
Yeah, it can be different.
I do know, though, that there's a lot of concern among kindergarten parents about what the kindergarten students are being expected to, to know by the end of kindergarten.
And I guess...
And they're feeling that there's already so much pressure being put upon the kindergartners.
It used to be half-day, they wouldn't have been able to pack it in. So, what is our philosophy? I mean, is our philosophy where if they pass the standards, we're going to ensure that we're implementing them and that we're going to be pushing one through a hundred and reading by the time they're out of kindergarten?
Well, those are the standards, obviously, that that's pretty much what we teach to because otherwise, it puts teachers at the next level at a disadvantage.
Right.
I think, though, it's important to recognize that even though the standards that all students will do this, we know not all students are going to do that.
Right, right.
That's the case now, that's always been the case. You know, kids develop and kids have different aptitude at any level of education, so, you know, it's like when "No Child Left Behind" came in and said, "All students are going to be here by this date," everyone knew it was unrealistic.
Well, I think that's why the district asked for, the board supported, some additional support services over the last few years because we know there's differential instruction in every classroom.
Sure. No, I just want to make sure that there's time for the noneducational aspect in K through two. And are we finding, if we were to poll the teachers right now, K through two teachers, what would, what would the board get as a response? Would, would the majority say, "These kids don't have any creative downtime?" Or is it all, "Okay, it's forty-five minutes of sitting, reading your book timely"?
I don't think teachers would say that. I think that the primary teachers do a great job of making learning fun and having activity. When I'm in classes, they're up and moving. I see them doing videos to music and dance. So, I, any primary teacher, I can't imagine is going to get rid of that aspect of the education.
Right. On the other piece, the standards don't speak to how you address them. They just speak to students should be able to, basically. So, the way one, you know, you're free in your classroom to address those standards as you see fit. And if you feel that learning through more playful activities is going to help you achieve that, then certainly the flexibility is there.
I think any, I think any elementary teacher or primary teacher would say that there's never enough time in the day.
Right.
I mean, I don't know the answer to this, but are teachers, when, when they put together a schedule at the beginning of the year, are they required, or, I don't know what the practice is, but do they block out so much time each day, like for English, to write a, what is it called, a personal narrative? What is it, kindergarten?
Generally.
And, and, you know, and the kid wants to talk about dinosaurs, he doesn't want to write a personal narrative? And, you know, if he's going to write, let him write about dinosaurs. That, that's my thought about it. And I, are they required to have that in their schedule or, and how does it work?
Well, elementary teachers have obviously some flexibility in their days. We have some limitations because you, there's RTI blocks they have to build around, there's special areas they have to build around. But generally, they have the ability to have, you know, ELA time and chunk it up together or, you know, mix it up, or they have math time, maybe it's part of a center. But they have flexibility when they teach those things during the day typically. So, there are some limitations. But are there certain expectations that teachers, when we're using the Teachers College Reading and Writing Units, that all kindergarten teachers teach those units? Obviously, with some flexibility, yes. And the math curriculum, they have to teach certain units. They don't have to be here doing this day by day, but there is common curricula that elementary staff, all just like high school and middle school.
I just wanted to comment something Christine said earlier. She said something about noneducational time. I just wanted to point out that I think that those creative play downtimes are very educational. And that's, that's truly how young children learn. I think that even if we don't, as a board, decide to send an email to each of these members of the Regents, I think it should be clear that we communicate to our primary school teachers that we really do respect the points that Mr. Roach pointed out here about how children do need creative time and flexibility and that we would, we truly do respect each child's individual need to learn at their own pace, especially in these very early formative years where there's such a difference, especially even within a grade, a kindergarten grade, we have some children who are almost six and some children who are four. So, it really does, I really hope that we can communicate to our primary school teachers the fact that we respect their work and their work with each individual child.
I agree. And I think to some extent, think of the Board of Regents as being the Board of Education for the whole state. You have a lot of urban areas where there are, you know, major issues with educating children and they might feel they need to have something like that in there so that, you know, maybe to ensure that something is done for students in areas that, you know, are unlike us here in Beth Mountain. Because I do believe that, you know, teachers have always done that, you know, looked at the development of kids and, and, and it would be kind of saying the same thing, getting to geometry. Students should be able to use logic in, in doing geometric proofs and be able to do geometric proofs. Although, there are some kids, I mean, that's, that might be the standard, but some kids just have problems doing those geometry proofs and, you know, just don't get it. And, you know, that's, you know, that's just the way it is. So, I think, you know, at some point, that those standards might be fine, but certainly, but certainly, that's not what I would think our teachers would be focusing on at the elementary level. I think they're doing more, you know, what they're to say.
I would just be concerned, though, if, if, if they have to learn to count to a hundred, or is that something we're going to data test? Are we going to be now testing our kindergarteners to see if they can count to a hundred by the end of kindergarten?
I mean, certainly, I mean, part of I-Ready is testing students to see whether they can. But, and then it's providing the teacher with resources and parents with resources to help students achieve that. It doesn't necessarily mean everyone's going to get there at the same time, but it's still your goal to get to that point. And just on the flip side, you know, I, I met with a group of parents recently. You know, it seems, you know, it's sort of the, the vocal groups get the most attention, I guess. But, you know, there always is a group of parents out there that came to see me, that they're very concerned that our elementary program is not rigorous enough. So it's, you know, to throw a blanket out there and say that by and large, folks think that our kids definitely need more play and so forth. There's also, you know, a core group of parents out there that think that we're not pushing our students hard enough. So we have to be somewhat careful throwing a blanket statement over, like, I guess, what everyone feels.
I was going to say, Jody, in the past, I know there were opportunities for board members to observe classrooms. I know, I, when Frank and I would hang out at the Lab School a bunch, I've been at elementary schools. And I don't want to recommend that we are a distraction in the classroom, but particularly for folks who have questions on what does an elementary school classroom look like, might you consider, you know, offering board members a chance to visit classrooms? I've been in special ed classrooms, I've been in co-talk classrooms, just to see what it actually looks like. Not rating teachers, obviously, but to say, this is what a co-talk. I saw Dave Brown's teach an amazing class of, where there are equal numbers of students with IEPs, and, and just to see what that looked like. And the elementary schools, and some of the newer teachers, to see what they're doing with technology. Because I, I was concerned about that last year. So, you know, people maybe should see Jody, if they'd like to just say, "I'd like to see what it looks like in, in practice," I think.
Well, we used to, we used to have a day that we designated that we'd all be visiting schools.
You used to go see the different classes.
Okay, and you're able, obviously, we couldn't visit all the schools. But overall, with all the members, we could. So you would take turns going each year to different schools, and you could go to one in the morning and one in the afternoon, and be able to observe.
Yeah, we should, we should think about that. Again, not to be disruptive in the classroom, clearly, but it gives us a sense of what's going on.
I have a question about the, the I-Ready, especially for the younger grades. How, how much time do they actually spend taking a test?
So it's, they take them three times a year now, basically, mid-year and end of year. The tests, depending on grade level, can take anywhere between thirty to forty-five minutes. And they do not suggest you take it all at once. So you take it in small chunks. So for kindergarten one, typically, they'll spend ten to fifteen minutes one day, put it away, come back another day, do ten, fifteen minutes until they finish. And they also recommend at the earlier grades to do it as part of your center work. So maybe only six students are taking it at a time, where the teacher can be actively involved with those six students as they're doing it for ten to fifteen minutes, and then they put it away. And then as the students get older, those timeframes can grow. But it's not intended to be given, even at the middle school level, it's not intended to be given in a single sitting. It's meant to be given over two days, where you can shrink the time down to a more reasonable amount of time. But also, not that this is a reason, a main reason for doing it, but looking ahead, next year, the state assessments will be on an electronic platform. So at some point, we do have to expose third through eighth graders in taking tests on an electronic platform. And this will help us achieve that as well. Where they're, they won't have the option not to sit straight through. But at least this will give them some exposure to it.
Thank you. Anybody else? We have no need to go back into executive session, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Thank you.